Yes.
I am.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Boyer, you can proceed on, we've just finished. We are, the planning commission has decided to table both meeting minutes for five fourteen and five twenty-one.
Right, and we have no old business, so we're ready for new business, which is mountain ridge overlay discussion with birthday group staff, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing other than, again, I want to apologize for you not getting your board packets in a timely manner. We'll do better next time.
Okay.
Um, so, Michael, the board, the planning commission does have paper copies in front of them. Um, you may have to help us navigate that, uh, because I don't know that they had, um, enough time to review, although they were, these particular ordinances that you presented to us were in the previous board packet, so they're not unfamiliar with it.
What data about?
That's right, yeah, so, I can, I can walk you all through, let me share my screen. All right, so, gave you a cover memo, and that was basically just, um, attaching a draft regulation of mountain ridge construction ordinance provision. Uh, and that's not walking through that. Um, and then it's derived from section fifteen point two dash twenty-two ninety-five point one of the Virginia code. Uh, and then I give you examples, uh, regulations from town of Bluefield, Floyd County, and Tazwell County, um, which I think are some good examples. Um, in working with Jada, we suggested that we keep this maybe as simple as it could be. Uh, and between the regulations from Bluefield and Floyd and Tazwell, they kind of approach it differently, and Floyd doesn't have zoning, and Tazwell, I can't remember, I think they don't have zoning either. But, um, a couple of different ways that localities are dealing with this, either through an overlay zoning district, which would basically take, um, create a separate zoning district for the regulation. Because you all don't have overlay zoning districts, we thought it was easier to just create a regulation. Um, and essentially, if you add this site condition, then that would trigger the potential for, uh, a use permit versus creating a whole nother, um, zoning district and, and creating, um, provisions for having an overlay zoning district. So, gave you this, and I think Jada also sent you, uh, this contour elevation topo map. Um, and it's not ideal, um, we don't, because as far as I know, we only have access to the static, uh, topographic layers, and I think, um, the county's GIS only has the same as well. And I can turn that on really quickly. Hmm, maybe? Uh, here we go. Yeah, so, the map that we provided in your GIS are really pulling from the same USGS, uh, static maps, so we don't actually have the contours as layers. But I was actually just doing a little, um, comparison to Google Maps, and Google Maps, you can turn on terrain, and it's a little more helpful, uh, because you can actually zoom in and get a better sense of where the topo lines are relative to some of the ridge lines and peaks. Now it doesn't want to show. Let's see, but yeah, you can get a better idea of what some of the elevations are. Um, I want to do a little bit more digging to determine, um, where they're pulling this data from. Uh, um, quite, you know, gives you a little better idea, and I think it's helpful to look at this and the ordinance, so. Let's see, walking you through the draft, and, and really, this is state code provisions, and we really try to stay as close to these as possible. Um, so they look, you know, the, the draft regulations for you all look very similar to what the state code provisions allow for. Uh, of course, being a Dillon's rules state, I think you want to kind of be as close to these, um, allowances as you can be. So, this would fit in into, I can't recall if you call it an article or a section, but it would go under Article three or Chapter three at the very end, so that's basically the same section that contains all of your, your general provisions, including the provisions that we just, um, worked on for solar. Um, and then this would just create a Section three dash seventeen. Um, we would have a quick purpose statement, and I highlighted in gray some of these numbers that we could potentially increase, I don't think you can decrease them, and the baseline in the state code is two thousand feet, uh, or more, or an ele, or, and an elevation of five hundred feet or more above the elevation of the adjacent valley floor. So, we kept the same definitions in here. Um, and basically, the way this would work is applicability provisions and regulations of this section shall apply to any parcel or portions thereof where any protected mountain ridge is located. Um, permitting tall buildings and structures proposed to be located, and it's good to kind of parse this all out. So tall buildings and structures would only be any building, structure, or unit within a multi-unit building with a vertical height of more than forty feet as determined by ordinance measured from the top of natural finish grade or the crest. Um, so it would only apply the structures that have a height of forty or more feet. Uh, and then there are exemptions, they don't include water, radio, telecommunications, or television towers, or any equipment for the transmission of electricity telephonic. But also not include structures of a relatively slender nature and minor vertical projections of a parent building, including but not limited to chimneys, flatpools, flues, spires, steeples, delfries, cupolas, antennas, poles, wires, or windmills. And again, would not apply to any building or structure designated as a historic landmark, building or structure by the United States or by the, uh, Board of Historic Resources. Um, and then I qualified, and I added to that definition to say the exclusion of equipment for the transmission of electricity and windmills from this definition that does not include equipment for the generation of electricity or towers or turbines associated with a wind energy generating facility, to be very clear. So again, where you have a tall building or structure, forty feet in height or more, and not otherwise exempt, and is proposed to be located on a protected mountain ridge, um, you're going to have to seek a special use permit to permit to approve that construction. Um, so basically, it allows for you all, the planning commission and the board supervisors to consider or not whether or not it's appropriate. Uh, it doesn't preclude anything, it just has that additional review. The only thing that truly precluded would, um, uh, well, it actually wouldn't be an exemption. Um, hypothetically, without the prohibition on utility scale wind, utility scale wind would be considered a tall building or structure, it's not exempt from that definition, but no one could ever apply for a use permit uh, for that under this, because that's also prohibited, uh, under zoning. So, kind of, it's a little bit of belt and suspenders in that way, but in any case, uh, um, and well, I forgot, I actually put this prohibition in there as well. Um, the following building or structure shall be prohibited entirely and are not eligible to seek a special use permit, uh, towers or turbines associated with wind energy generating facility, so that is addressing here. Um, we did add certain criteria. Um, so in addition to what's already in the ordinance for consideration of special use permits, um, any special use permit under this section shall be denied if the applicant fails to provide for adequate sewage, water, and drainage facilities, including but not limited to facilities for drinking water and the adequate supply of water for protection and compliance with the erosion and sediment control law. Um, so, to kind of better understand kind of the scope of what this is, so, yes, the definition of protected mountain ridge means a ridge and with an elevation of, again, in the state code, two thousand feet or more, and an elevation of five hundred feet or more above the elevation of an adjacent valley floor. Uh, but the definition of ridge is important, because a ridge is only, only means the elongated crest or series of crests at the apex or uppermost point of intersection between two opposite slopes or sides of a mountain. It includes all land within a hundred feet below the elevation, uh, and any portion of such line or surface along the crest. So, let's say you, let's say you went with the number of two thousand feet. Um, that is not regulating everything that is above two thousand feet, it's only going to regulate, uh, ridge lines, a ridge line and a hundred feet within that ridge, within the top of that ridge that's above two thousand feet. So that you could have a, a mountain that is well above two thousand feet, but again, it's only going to regulate the, the upper a hundred feet of that, um, mountain at the ridge point. Uh, if that makes sense. And granted, you all have, you know, your elevations generally are more than two thousand feet. Um, but again, it's only going to regulate that top one hundred feet of any ridge point, so you could hypothetically stay with the two thousand feet, knowing that it's still only going to touch the top hundred feet of every ridge that's above two thousand feet, or you could consider bumping that number up, uh, to be more precise in terms of where it's going to capture. Um, you know, if, if you were to look at the number like three thousand or thirty-five hundred or, or even four thousand, maybe that captured everything, um, that you, that, that the county's concerned about. Um, but again, let's say, for instance, let's say you're at, the number's thirty-eight hundred, and the top of this ridge is at forty-two hundred, it's only going to capture everything that is, uh, I mean, that's even higher than that, but let's presume that the ridge line is at forty-two hundred, it's not going to capture everything between thirty-eight hundred and forty-two hundred, it's only going to capture that everything, um, you know, that's within a hundred feet of that forty-two hundred elevation. So, hopefully that clarifies it. But, um, you know, I, I admittedly, we've not worked on this, um, so we're relying on what the state code allows and our interpretation of it. Um, and these examples that we've found, and, and I think and keeping it as simple as possible, um, I think is something that, um, I would encourage, uh, but I'm happy to kind of walk through and try to help answer any questions.
So, in the example you gave, let's say some, with thirty-eight hundred feet elevation, someone wants to build a structure. Is that allowed?
So, yes, so, let's say, let's say you set the, the height at, the elevation at, at thirty-eight hundred. And there was a, you know, a ridge, let's say, at a particular mountain ridge that was at, um, an elevation of thirty-nine hundred. So, they, if they wanted to build a house, they could do that, if the house was over forty feet in height.
Less than forty.
They could.
Less than forty. Less than forty feet?
No, over forty feet in height, forty feet in height and greater, because that's when it would be considered a tall structure. They could do that, they would just need to get a special use permit to do that. If they, if it was less than forty feet in height, then they wouldn't be subject to the restriction, they, they could do that as allowed by zoning. But if it was a tall building or structure, which is only, um, buildings or structures that are having vertical height of more than forty feet measured from the top of the grade, um, of the crest or the natural finish grade of the high side of the slope of a ridge to the uppermost point of the building, then they would need a special use permit to do that. If, let's say the limit was at thirty-eight hundred feet, and the ridge was at four thousand feet, and their particular site was at thirty-nine hundred feet, um, they could do it without a special use permit, as long as that site was less than, or excuse me, a hundred feet or more from that ridge line.
You're talking about?
Again, this is really only addressing areas that are within a hundred feet of the ridge line and where those ridge lines are above whatever number, whatever elevation you come up with.
Well, the, the houses, I don't think we're out to say you can't build a house over forty feet tall. I think, I think what we're after is somebody building condominiums or a, a commercial hotel or motel that would exceed forty feet in height, is, is, am I on the right track, or?
It's average height of a house.
Well, it could be a two-story house, well over forty feet then.
And it all depends on where you're at. And it's, for instance, I know they're, they're going to have to do some blasting at Point Lookout. Point Lookout's at forty-five hundred feet, and this particular house that I was talking about is almost to the very top of Point Lookout. And when I had this discussion with the building official today, um, he suggested that we word it so that we exclude our five residential structures. And R five is considered residential homes, single-family dwellings, and townhomes. That way, we're not precluding anyone from building, and then we're not causing a hardship for a homeowner to actually have to do a a special use permit, because that is holding, that would hold up their build, like by two months.
Right. So what we're after is, is that commercial?
I feel that's the way the board of supervisors is leaning, it's those tall structures that would be considered condominiums, hotels, and such.
Like banner?
Not, right, like banner, not, not residential, single-family dwellings.
Yeah, that's true.
So, in my head, I, I done a little thinking before the meeting about the permitting process. Just putting, and I, Michael, I didn't realize that we had the ability to alter a state code definition. And so we could?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I would just tell you, I think you can make it, um, more limiting, you can, well, you can make it more limiting on your authority, you can't make it more limiting on, um, I would say on, on property, private property interest. So for instance, on the protected mountain ridge, where it says means a ridge with an elevation of two thousand feet or more, you could increase that number, but I don't, I don't believe you could decrease it, you couldn't capture more area. You couldn't say that, you couldn't, you couldn't make that number one thousand feet or more, but you couldn't make it more, greater than two thousand.
Right, and I knew that, so is there a possibility to add additional language either in the tall buildings and structures to, um, not to exclude our five, or to, to exclude our five dwellings? Or in three dash seventeen-three on the permitting side, tall buildings and structures proposed to be located on a protected mountain ridge excluding our five residential structures and accessories?
Yeah, I think, I think you'd either do it, and I already made a note in the tall buildings or structures definition about that, but I think you would either do it in either of those places or even both of those places, just so it's very clear.
Because I really do feel that the board of supervisors doesn't want this overlay to prohibit residential construction. And knowing how certain areas of the county are, there's a likelihood, especially at Point Lookout, for them to be greater than forty foot in height. But most houses aren't going to be that high.
Correct, no, I, I think, I think you can narrow the scope in that way. The, yes, the state code allows you to have this regulation, and I think what you're suggesting is would be narrowing the county's authority and, and that you would still be within the, kind of the corners of what the state code allows. I think that, I think you can do that, and based on what we're describing.
This elevation, two thousand feet, I think it's off the low, I think I live by the elevation of two thousand feet.
We're twenty-seven years.
Yeah, yeah, so I would imagine you guys would want to increase.
That's nothing.
Increase that height.
Yeah. And that would, uh?
Yeah, I would suggest on this one.
I'm sorry, Michael.
No, I was just going to say, I would suggest on the, on that elevation point to think about what is the lowest mountain ridge that you can see needing protection in this way? And then, you know, looking at that and trying to figure out, okay, what is the elevation of that particular mountain ridge, and, and then we can kind of go off of that. Um, but my, my guess is that, you know, that number's probably going to be closer to thirty-five hundred feet, um, than anything. And, you know, if I can, I'll share my screen again. Um, you know, that's going to protect all of, you know, the bridges along the northern part of the county and everything, you know, in the central, but not some of these areas here, not some of these areas here, but I would point lookout for it here, in this vicinity, I think. Um, and just, you know, having worked with you all, I think, you know, these areas are certainly more of your interest in these areas versus some of these, um, outerlying areas.
You know, ridge lines and the national park system are too, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't, um, I mean, a lot of development is going to be precluded by the underlying zoning in those areas anyway. Um, I don't think it's, uh, let's see. Is yeah, you know, anything that's, um, a building or structure uh, by the United States would be exempt from, from our local regu, from your local regulations, so that's not so much of a concern, and I think the underlying zoning takes care of a lot of that anyway. Um, so, i- it's really figuring out what that elevation point is and, and aligning with where you expect to see development and, and what would be, you know, impactful, um, potentially.
I think two thousand is too low, thirty-five hundred seems more, uh, amenable. Maybe a little more. Are we primarily concerned with Point Lookout and Buck Mountain?
Well, Mount Rogers is over fifty-seven.
Yeah, they're fifty-seven, Commer's Rock, uh, at the highest point of overlook, it was four thousand seventy-two. White Top was fifty-five, fifty-seven.
Mount Rogers fifty-seven, White Top fifty-five.
Fifty-five, and then Mount Rogers fifty-seven, and then Elk Garden was somewhere around, I looked at it, it was forty-four. So, thirty-five, thirty-eight.
Now, some of that in Mount Rogers is great and high, so that's, that's not our purview, right?
Right. Most of the western end is Eta and it's natural forest, yeah. Um, even it's Commer's Rock, all that of theirs.
There's cemetery up there that when you're there, you look over it, Mount Rogers not up.
Yeah.
Well, cemetery, I think it is. Well, uh, what's the opinion of the group, something larger than two thousand? Thirty-five hundred, thirty-eight hundred? Michael, do you have any, uh, comment?
Some of the areas that would be taking in.
You know, I'm still, I, I feel like
Well.
Thirty-five hundred is probably the right number.
That's good.
And it'd be my fault.
Do we need to take any kind of vote, do we think, like, that's change, or just?
That's thirty-five hundred, is that going to take place of the forty thousand?
Right, yeah, those little boxes that are highlighted in gray, I didn't print it in color, I'm not sure if it was engraved out, but that's the area that we're discussing right now, is that three thousand. State code says two thousand, but we can increase that. We just can't go lower than two thousand.
You want to add the Rs?
Yeah, I mean, I know that's, I'm pretty adamant about that, I, I don't want to, I don't want to preclude any residential builds, I don't want to have to make the planning commission review those, because those are single-family dwellings, and I feel like the board supervisors would approve, I don't think they would want us to
So.
usher those people through these.
Unless the cost.
Enough, yeah, just to build a house right now, it takes a lot of paperwork and a lot of plan reviews, and just to add this to it, I don't think that we would be, um, doing anyone any favors.
This one hundred feet below the ridge line, that would prevent someone from building a house right on top of the ridge?
If we put exemptions in there that would exclude our fives, then yes, they could build a house right on top of the ridge.
Does that bother anybody?
Bother me? Bothered me?
And if it came back that we had an overdevelopment and we were strip, stripping the mountain tops residential's builds, then we could come back and review it, but.
There's a lot of these ridge talks you can hardly get to.
Right, yeah, it would be more expensive to put a road in to even get to it, that it, it would just absolutely it would. Yeah, yeah, around here, right. It's just my fault.
Do we need to just make a suggestion to Michael, or do we need to vote?
Are we just in a, just a talking point at this point, do we just, do we need to take votes on this, that we are all in agreement, or?
I, I think, you know, if there's consensus or even alternative perspectives, I think, you know, share those, and, and then we can like, or with Jada to revise it and get it back to you for public like work with Jada to, to revise it and get it back to you for public hearing.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, I'll just ask, the commission good at thirty-five hundred?
Good.
Good.
All right, so I've got, everybody shaking their heads, yeah, thirty-five hundred.
All right. And exemptions for single-family dwellings and two-family and townhouses?
Yeah, R five residential structures is the way he worded it because I said, okay, define R five and he said, R five is single-family dwellings and townhomes. That's all R five is. Anything beyond that would fall into commercial, R three and such.
How about, uh, I thought it was a townhome, how about a string of six townhomes tied together?
It would still be considered R five, which we need desperately if anybody knows a developer.
What we really want to prevent is three or four-story apartment complexes and hotels.
Well, and, and they would only be allowed if they're allowed in the underlying zoning, in the zoning district.
Thank you.
Um, you know, so, so if, if you don't allow those uses in the areas that where these elevations are, where these ridge lines are, um, then they wouldn't be able to comply regardless.
If they're going in the valley, they can't build them on the ridge line.
That's correct, yeah.
Yep, have anything else, Michael?
Yes, sir.
So, one question to you, are we gonna make these changes and come back to the board for final approval or does, are we just gonna make these changes and then hit it hard with public hearing next month? If the board, so, if the board chooses to do that tonight?
Um, I, I think ultimately that's up to the, to the commission, but, um, yeah, it sounds like to me, I, I feel like I'm in a good place to finalize it and, and if you all are ready for a public hearing, we can get it back to you, uh, for that next month. But it's really up to you all.
Should we have a public hearing before we vote on it?
Well, that's up to you. If you feel comfortable with him as he is, but making the changes to thirty-five hundred and then adding in the R five language, uh, not to exclude or to excluding R five resi, you know, R five structures in permitting and in the tall buildings, uh, section of the definition.
Well, this seems pretty simple, straightforward to me in making the changes that we have suggested. I think we go with a public hearing.
Okay. Michael, I believe we have a consensus to, uh, make these changes um, and then we'll hold public hearing in July. Uh, we have nobody's, the, the members that are here, is there any vacations I need to know about that we're not gonna have? It would be July eighteenth, I believe. As long as we have a quorum, that's my biggest, I don't wanna advertise and not have a quorum.
July, well, I can be here. July.
I gotta be here.
You gotta be here, yeah.
It's July eighteenth, is that the third?
The sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
Be gone.
You're gone? Okay.
I don't know, I'll be in five minutes.
Okay. I think we'll have an, an effort for one.
You go to Hayfield and get him.
When he called me, I threatened him. It's hard, he better not be standing me up today.
I was just trying to call you back.
I would have, I would have totally got it once I got in here, but like, oh, he's, I'm sorry, I really am, we're, we're gonna fix this board packet issue.
Well, Michael, thank you.
Thank you all. Have a, uh, happy Fourth of July.
Same to you.
Same to you, Michael.
All right, take care, thank you.
All right, we'll be talking soon.
All right, thank you, bye.
Should we have any of the new business?
Um, I'll just, uh, share with the, the planning commission for those that didn't, uh, ju, that weren't here when, when I was asked. Uh, the board of supervisors did approve our comprehensive plan and our text amendments for renewable energy. So, it is now, uh, in our ordinances, although not actually put in there just yet, I am working on getting those amendments included into the zoning ordinance. We'll add this language in and then we'll finalize and get you a new, uh, zoning ordinance. There's some other updates that I'm, I'm looking to make to that zoning ordinance, but right now, I'm not gonna do that anytime soon. Did have a discussion with the attorney, he thought maybe we should at least maybe update, uh, some language on the special use permits for the board of supervisors, just to have as part of motions and such, so we'll work on that a little bit later. Still waiting on the comprehensive plan updates. We're definitely not getting it done by July. We're still waiting on Mount Rogers Planning District Commission to finalize some of that data and some of the maps. The comprehensive plan chap, chapter seven was, uh, approved and the special use permit for Ms. Goodwin was also denied. So, I have a suspicion that we will probably have an appeals in a circuit court on that, so, um, that's about all that I know of at the, at the moment that this planning commission has been working on. But those were final outcomes at the last board meeting. I do have a couple of projects that I'm working on. Uh, really didn't have anything to do with the planning commission, but we, uh, now have a, or will have a construction entrance up at the industrial park to go to the backside of the rec. Uh, SimCon, uh, was awarded that bid. And then we actually, uh, received bids for the powerhouse parking lot. Uh, we received those on this Thursday at two o'clock here in the boardroom. So, I'm anxious to get those bids in to see whether or not we can award that one.
One of the, um, committed industrial park.
Three sixty-some, and that's with asphalt.
That's very reasonable.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was somewhere in that. We got it under what we had anticipated, so I was very excited about that. I don't have anything else.
Okay, anybody have any other comments? You hear a motion to adjourn? I normally do this, but.
Yeah, when you jumped in front of me. I like that much.
All right. Go ahead, a second. I presume everybody's gonna say aye?
Aye.
Thanks for coming out and making a quorum.